And welcome everybody. Good afternoon to this special session on the University Superannuation Scheme, the pension scheme for, I guess, the majority of UK university academics. I suspect that many of you listening this afternoon will know a great deal about the position of the USS and are completely aware of the strike action that's taken place and the possibility it may continue. But I think the issues are of wider significance and interest than just to UK academics, many of whom may be in the USS. And I think it's an opportunity for us this afternoon to discuss those wider issues as well as the specific position that the USS finds itself in. And I think those wider issues really are very fundamental to all pension schemes and indeed to savings in general. There are issues about measuring risk, risk sharing, about portfolio design for long-term investors, about measurement, measurement of the volatility and risk of assets and of expected returns on assets. And I think there are also some regulatory and legal issues, some of which stem from pensions law. I think there are also deep economic issues about intergenerational risk sharing and perhaps even more fundamentally, intergenerational fairness. I thought it might be helpful to give us sort of 60 second, and I literally mean 60 second overview of the situation with the USS. Our speakers will elaborate on this in great deal. But for those of you who are listening in this afternoon, who are perhaps not entirely familiar with the position of the USS, let me give you a sort of 60 second overview. The first is that the USS is probably, I think it is, the largest funded UK pension scheme. Assets right now, somewhere around about 85 billion and on some measures, on some measures liabilities that exceed that. And on some measures, they exceed it by rather a large amount. At various times in recent years, it has had deficits, at least on some measures of deficits, that have been reported as being in the tens of billions. Some would argue that these so-called deficits are largely illusory. One of the major issues we'll talk about this afternoon. The strategy of the USS has been to see contribution rates rise and to see, very recently, an agreement that there will be some reduction in the generosity of newly accrued pension rights. A strategy which has been opposed by many members of the USS and indeed by the union representing many members of the USS. And we've seen strike action on the back of that. To analyse the issues this afternoon, we're going to have three presentations. We have with us three people who have thought long and hard about these issues. Wu Yun will lead off. He's a reader of, a reader in financial economics at Cardiff Business School, specialises in empirical finance issues, has written extensively on pension issues and specifically on the position of the USS. Widely quoted work he's written in this area and actively used in the debate. I think he's also a union, a UCU alternate negotiator. James Sefton, colleague of mine at Imperial College, professor of finance, written extensively on issues connected with intergenerational equity and risk sharing, generational accounts, running a large ESRC project right now on the changing distribution of resources across generations. He's going to follow Wu. And then we're going to hear from Dame Kate Barker, Chair of the University Superannuation Scheme since, I think, Kate, September 2020. Formerly Chief Economic Advisor at CBI, a member of the Monetary Policy Committee at the Bank of England, author of the Barker Report back in the early 2000s on the planning system in the UK. We're going to leave plenty of time for discussion, for Q and A. But we're going to run through the presentations first and each of our three speakers will talk for no more than 15 minutes, which then should leave us a good 40 minutes for Q and A and discussion. So Wu, if I could ask you to lead off, then we'll hear from James and then Kate Barker will respond.
Okay. Thanks, David. I'm going to share my screen now. First, I would like to acknowledge the effort and time Kate has put in USS for us, especially Kate taking part in session today, for which I must express my sincere thanks. I also would like to thank David for inviting me and chairing the session and James for sharing the research findings on pensions and the USS. I very much hope today's session can contribute towards resolving the USS dispute, which has been going on for four years now. A DB scheme is self-sufficient if the likelihood of requiring employers' financial support or covenant is low. An implication is the self-sufficiency of portfolio that comprises of many guilts. Such a portfolio is reasonable for a closed scheme, but not for an open scheme. As I shall explain later, deficit or surplus is essentially a question of whether to treat USS as an open or closed scheme in valuation. USS is an open scheme with strong flow of new entrants. It invests significantly in risky assets. Despite being an open scheme, guilts self-sufficiency drives its 2017 and 2020 valuations. The 2017 valuation imposed a hypothetical de-risking to a guilts sufficiency, self-sufficiency portfolio. The 2020 valuation uses guilts self-sufficiency as basis for risk management, which asks for a strong covenant, giving rise to large deficits. Recently, a joint letter from Oxford, Cambridge and Imperial College expresses concerns over the schemes and due focus on the gap to self-sufficiency risk metric. Let's look at the view of professionals. In response to the pensions regulators' defined benefits funding consultation, the Association of Pension Lawyers says, "Nothing in the legislation suggests a move to minimise dependence on the employer's covenant. They'll always be appropriate, or the trustees should be pushed in the direction." And of course, could well be inconsistent with the sustainable growth objective of employer. In short, guilts self-sufficiency is not something that is required by law. The employer actually says, "We are therefore concerned that the risk framework in the 2020 valuation is more appropriate for a closed scheme." The union actually says, "What is not reasonable in an open scheme is for issues of self-sufficiency, the override are the issues such as affordability for the employers and active members and the need for stability in the contribution rate." David Faes is the Executive Director of the Pension Regulator. At end of 2020, he said in a block, "Truly open schemes with a strong flow of new entrants might invest in more illiquid and volatile assets in the expectation of a high return and consequently set lower technical provisions." The rationale being that there is sufficient time for the scheme to write out that volatility. Lower technical provisions mean lower scheme liability, which is the discounted value of all accrued benefits to be paid by the scheme. David continues, "And if they continue to remain open and in a steady state, they will continue to stand still and not progress towards long-term objectives." "To remain open and in a steady state allowed me to carry out some mathematical modelling on the next slide to study the risk faced by an open scheme. Consider a simple model of an open DB scheme that is in a steady state in which contributions and outgo remain the same in real terms each year. For this open scheme, the required maximum contribution rate is one such that the total cash contributions are just enough to pay for outgo. To see the proof, assume asset expected return mu is positive and total contributions equal to the outgo. Then, as you can see from equation in blue, ct minus ot equals zero. The asset at evolves like a random walk with a positive drift mu. This allows me to derive the probability of future asset larger than scheme liability L as a standard normal cumulative distribution function, which tends to one as t gets large." The asset equation in blue explains the difference between an open and closed scheme. For a closed scheme that receives no contributions, risk arises when investment returns poorly and the scheme must sell assets at low price to pay for outgo. For an open scheme with positive ct, the cash contributions not only help pay for outgo, but they also buy assets at cheap price should investment return then, should investment return turns badly. So cash contribution ct mitigates risk during adverse markets, whereas accumulated return to mu ensures schemes' long-term viability. For a scheme with similar assets and benefits as USS, the maximum contribution rate is 34.7% of payroll. For contribution rates lower than 34.7%, the tables provides at various future years the risk of underfunding, which is asset less than liability, and the risk of not paying pensions in full. Note that both risks converge to the same probability because, given a fixed contribution rate, the scheme will either run out of money or be massively overfunded if outgo paid. Some important implications can be noticed here from the previous slide. First, interest rate does not price define benefits. If index-linked guilt u is used as discount rate, the required contribution rate is 48% of payroll, which is higher than the required maximum contribution rate obtained, which is under 35%. The difference can be explained by the breach of Ross arbitrage-free pricing condition. A defined benefits scheme is an example that renders arbitrage-free pricing conditions invalid. For the scheme, arbitrages to the benefit of pensioners. Therefore, the role of liability driven investment by buying costly index-linked guilts should be limited. Next, the remaining, next being remaining open and investing in growth assets provide more security than a closed self-sufficient scheme does. Third, there is no recourse to employers' money in this simulation study. This means, rather than employers' financial strength, covenant depends on, first, the nature of business activities, two, likelihood of employers' continuing such activities. Given the standing of the UK higher education sector in the world, USS scores highly in these two criteria. The USS 2020 valuation asks for contributions, asks for contribution rates ranging from 40.8% of payroll to 67.9%. The very high rate suggests something is not quite right with the valuation methodology, namely irrelevant factors are considered and many costs are double counted. In line with the pension regulator's recommendation, I carry out simulation study on the model DB scheme to investigate the future prospect of USS, starting from 26% of payroll contribution rate, 1 over 75 accrual rate and a funding ratio of 136%. USS in 2020 valuation has similar funding ratio and 60% equity. In 20 years' time, the contribution rate can be lowered, as you can see from the table, to 24%, whereas the accrual rate and funding ratio rises to 1 over 73.5 and 176% respectively. The second table below shows that the USS funding ratio is on a rising trajectory. With asset at 80.6 billion as of 2021, the USS 2021 valuation funding ratio is 147%, suggesting that the simulator results of both are realistic and achievable. A higher funding ratio implies a lower required rate of return to pay for outgo. And the graph on the right shows USS falling required rate of return. The orange part of the graph is projected by USS based on 26% of contribution rate, which shows in less than 20 years' time, the required real rate of return will be negative. Things turn out to be better. As of February 2022, with 88.8 billion asset, the required real rate of investment return for USS is only 0.02% in real terms. The results of last slide motivates me to ask this question. Can USS be the Norway's wealth fund of UK pension schemes? The Norway wealth fund is formally called Government Pension Fund of Norway. Its market value is 1.3 trillion dollars or quarter of a million dollar per citizen of Norway. Intergenerational risk sharing enables DB schemes to invest long-term in growth assets because during crisis, active members' contributions help pay for retired members' pensions and buy assets at low price. This is how intergenerational risk sharing works. In my view, mindset for DBs need to be rectified. First, USS is viewed as a liability to employer. Please remember, USS is prudently funded with rising surplus, according to my research. Second, worry that the size of liability is too large for the sector. Note, the liability is hugely overstated by irrelevant factors. Third, cannot accept that DB of USS would never be closed. Intergenerational risk sharing of DB schemes makes UK higher education sector competitive. The rising funding ratio improves security, lower contribution rates and raises benefits. Finally, the purpose of regulations and institutions is there to ensure, is to ensure the economic knowledge such as the benefits of intergenerational risk sharing be realised for all workers and pensioners. Given the arguments presented in this slide, I believe the answer to the question is yes. I hope the answer to the questions on this slide will inform us what to be done regarding the dispute. Can USS reconsider the role of cash contributions in valuation? Note that both union and employer suggested cash contributions as alternative approach to the guilts self-sufficiency risk metrics, but unfortunately was rejected by USS. Would trustees' duty be affected if the opposite of one and two below happened? Who would benefit, members, employers or current executive team? One is the remit of VMDF excluded valuation assumptions. We all know that we will get what we assumes. Two, USS recently rejected the request to provide its maximum contribution rate and related risk analysis as presented here today. I end my presentation here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Wu. Provocative presentation and we're going to have lots of questions on the back of what you just said. But James, why don't you pick up the story and then we'll, we'll, we'll turn to Kate for a response from the USS. James, over to you.
Can you, can you tell me what you're, you're seeing? You've seen the slide?
We've, we've got your slides. We've got some notes as well on the site. That's on full screen. That's, that's good.
Great. Sounds good now. Lovely. Got you. Okay. Thanks. Thanks very much, Wu. Lots to think about there. So hopefully my, my presentation will complement Wu's and give an overall view. So in the next 15 minutes, I want to argue that in order to find some resolution to this dispute, we're going to need to better sort of understand the risks implicit within the USS. Because it's this understanding of the risks, I think, that divides the two sides. Now, the USS members, as represented here by the unions, the UCU, argue that the USS has more than enough funds, sufficient, sufficient funds in order to meet all its pension promises in the future with room to spare. I agree that in the, in all likelihood, the USS does have enough funds. However, the pension regulator argues that there is a small probability. And they argue this is what counts because after all, you know, DB pensions are guaranteed future income streams. They have to say there's a small probability that if market returns are poor, then the size of the shortfall would be too big for universities to bear, given their current, their current cash flows. And I agree with this too. So do I just want to be friends with everyone? Well, yes, but in this case, I can be. And in the first half of this talk, I just want to explain, try and explain exactly why I think both these statements are actually true. I want to present a few simulations and sort of, you know, run these simulations forward. The idea of these simulations is they're really transparent, easy to understand and show that in the majority of cases, there is enough funds to pay future pension promises. But there is a significant probability also that the funds could be exhausted. Then in the second half of the talk, I also want to present a way forward. I think the, or I believe that the risk within the USS scheme, the implicit risk has to be reduced. And I want to suggest an idea that David and myself had to try and reduce that risk in what we believe is a fairly straightforward and simple way. Now, I'm going to start my story in March 2020. I know as Wu pointed out, the dispute started way before that, but I'm going to start my story in March 2020 with the 2020 valuation. And I'm going to focus, and in this, in this way, I sort of split again from Wu. I'm going to focus purely on the accrued promises, pension promises, and ask, is there enough assets currently in the fund to satisfy those approved promises? Now, I believe the method, I think, could be applied to future contributions to try and estimate what the required service costs are, but I leave that for future work. Now, the bottom line of the March 2020 valuation was that the US was in a significant deficit. There wasn't sufficient assets to pay off these approved pension promises and therefore there needed to be a significant change in future benefits to restore balance to the fund. So what was the size of the benefit? Now, this is where the problems start because it depends how you price that risk implicit within the scheme. And there was no clear agreement on one number. For that reason, I think we see this plethora of different measures of this deficit. I mean, Wu mentioned a couple, the technical provision, the self-sufficiency, the covenant support requirement, the buyout measure, and even the pension protected fund deficit. And that's just five and no more if you search hard enough. And all these different measures of deficit can be understood. One way of understanding them is just pricing the risks slightly different. And the problem is one number cannot, is not a sufficient statistic to describe a whole distribution. And so what I want to do and propose is to look at that distribution. Now, can there are any numbers that we can get, what we're going to use out of the March 2020 valuation? I mean, one measure of the deficit was 35, the self-sufficiency deficit was 35 billion, which is a large number, given the assets in the fund at that time was 66.6 billion. So that's almost 50% of the assets. But the number I really want to focus on was the size or the estimated size of the covenant. This is an estimate of the size of the losses that the universities could bear, given their covenant is tending to stronger, the TTS, given the covenant was 22%. And that was estimated at 10% of salaries for the covenant horizon of 20 years. So that's the sort of loss USS is thought to be able to bear if the returns are poor. Now, the other numbers we need are an estimate, we're going to run these simulations forward of the fund, the other numbers we need are some estimates of what the returns we can expect. And here's two of the key, if you like, key numbers or data on the key numbers we want to look at. The first, the blue line is the UK 10-year real yield. So this is the expected return on index-linked guilt. And you can see here that it's fallen from, in the last 40 years, from just below 4% to down below minus 2%. And this is, you know, this is the heart of the problems of the USS. Pension promises have come more expensive and Stephen Wright in a recent paper from Burbank suggested that the, it resulted in pension promises now 450% more expensive than they were in 1985. So that's the root of the problem. The other line is better news. The better news, that's looking at an estimate of the equity risk premium. This is the extra return to equities over guilt. And the, the big takeaway from that line is that it looks like it's been, it hasn't been falling, it hasn't changed much. These are figures from the US market from Asmaud de Marderan's paper, but there are other estimates out there giving a similar story that the equity risk premium has been roughly constant over this period. And anywhere you can pick a number between four and maybe six and a half percent. Now, what I want to do is just do a simulation. So I want to run, you know, 10,000 simulations. You might think of 10,000 power universes where, where we got this USSS and see what the distribution of outcomes is across these universes. As I said, I'm going to focus just on the accrued pension promises as of today. I'm going to do all my calculations in real terms. I think this is reasonable. Certainly historically, all the pension benefits are index-linked, so that makes sense to do it in real terms. I'm going to keep my portfolio rule or investment rule very simple. I'm going to choose 75% in equity with the rest in real bonds. The returns to real bonds were described by the forward yield curve at the time of the valuation. I'm going to assume equity returns are normally, log normally distributed with an expected real return of four and a half percent. Now, in 2020, the March 2020 valuation, and in fact, today as well, real returns toward in the forward yield curve average around one and a half, minus one and a half to minus 2%. So an expected real return of four and a half percent is a risk premium of somewhere between 6, 6.5%. So if you think about the graph I just showed previously, we're on the, you know, we're on the positive side there, definitely on the, on the positive side of what returns we're going to expect from equities. And we're going to assume an annual volatility of 17.5%, which is roughly the historical level of volatility. Now, what I'm going to do is I'm going to assume got assets today. I'm going to run it forward, simulate over time. I'm assuming the pension promises are paid as they come due and the assets' returns are collected and reinvested into the portfolio with this sort of expected returns going forward. And that's what this graph shows here. Now, I'll talk you through this graph, it's a little bit complicated, you'll get hang of it in a minute. So if, what it is, is a measure of the size of the assets remaining in the fund at different point, projected forward at different points in time. So if we start in 2020, and this is for the numbers as of the March 2020 valuation, when the assets in the USS were 66.6 billion or 67 billion. So we can see that grey block in 2020. Now, that's because the 67 billion is somewhere in that bound of 50 to 100 billion, which I've coloured this grey with 100% probability. And so we see that stack of grey in 2020. So now that's right, wind forward 10 years. So these pension promises come due, they're paid over the next 10 years, the assets return. And we're looking across the distribution of our 10,000 universes. Yes, in some the returns are good and someone are bad and we look at that distribution. And in 50% of those cases, the assets in the fund at the end of 2030, yes, remain grey, remain between 50 and 100 billion in, in the fund. However, if returns are slightly below expectations, there now is a probability for roughly 40% that orange band, that assets have remained positive in the fund, but are somewhere between 0 and 50 billion. But there's also could be good news in some of these simulations. And here it's about a 15% probability, the assets actually might, if the returns are really good, might be above 100 billion. That's 2030. I wind forward another 10 years to 2040. And what I want to really bring out here is this black block at the bottom. Yes, it's bad news. So now in 2040, we have, it's roughly 3%, yes? There was a 3% probability that return There was a three percent probability that returns are so poor that actually the funds have been exhausted. The USS no longer has any funds remaining. And in twenty forty, if you estimate the present value of the future liabilities on a buyout basis, yes, the liabilities remaining are roughly about fifty billion. And so, which is greater than the covenant of twenty-two billion, so we color that black. It's more risk or more loss than the universities can bear. It's bad, it's bad news. Now we wind forward, you see in twenty fifty, the block, that black block comes bigger. But let's concentrate on the final line in two thousand one hundred. By two thousand one hundred, all pension promises have been paid at this point now. So all debts have been paid off. What's the likely amount of money left in the fund? And you can see here, there's been a twenty, there's a twenty-five percent probability, quite significant probability, the funds got exhausted roughly before twenty fifty-seven, and the liabilities remaining were greater than the size of that covenant. There's another fifteen percent of probability, the funds got exhausted, i.e. they ran out after twenty fifty-seven. But the covenant was big enough to cover that loss. But the most likely outcome, and this is what the unions say, the most likely outcome, there is a sixty percent probability, there was more than enough assets left in the fund to pay all the pension promises, and there might be a lot left over, there might be a significant surplus. And then there's even a sort of thirteen percent in, according to these simulations, there might be more than four hundred billion surplus. So a significant upside too, as well as that downside. Now, a lot argued that May, March twenty twenty was an unfortunate time to do the evaluation. That's when, you know, the market at the bottom, after the pandemic started. And then there was this huge market recovery afterwards. So I've redone the simulations for June twenty twenty-one, where now the USS assets were at eighty-eight, roughly around eighty-eight billion. Okay, so this is massive jump back in assets, and that has made the position look better. It was slightly offset because real rates fell further, making the liabilities slightly more expensive. However, the net effect is an improvement. However, look at this graph, you'll see that even with these much higher valuations of the assets at eighty-eight billion, there's still over eleven, about, around about eleven percent probability that the funds could be exhausted. Now, we'll mention this, what sort of risk would the regulator be willing to take? I mean, we don't know, it's not completely clear what it says, but the number that's always used is five percent. They would be willing to tolerate a sort of five percent tail risk. We get estimate a risk greater than that. So the big takeaway from these graphs is, yes, the unions are right. In all probability, eighty percent probability here, there's more than enough money in the, in the fund to pay all the pension promises. However, the regulator is also right, there is a significant tail risk left. And the funds could be exhausted, leaving a rather large liability for the universities to meet. In fact, one that they probably couldn't, couldn't cover. Now, the problem therefore with the USS is this, it's just too big. There's too much risk within that fund. And the universities, as the employer, can't really bear, the covenant's not large enough to bear that level of risk. And so the solution has to be to get that risk down, to bring it down. And so that's what we suggest. So David and I came up with this idea, yeah, not really an idea, but a small innovation, a small thought, about one way to keep that risk down. And the idea is, there is a significant upside to the pension fund. As you saw, there is a probability, there actually, there's assets at the end could be four hundred billion. Now, if you are a member of the USS Pension Fund, the great advantage to you is that you are guaranteed an income, a pension income when you retire. Now, that pension income is, you know, slightly conservative, but it's a guarantee, and that's very, very valuable to members. Now, what we thought is, is that the optimal risk-return trade-off for a member? Yes, they want some of the, they do definitely want a guaranteed income. But do they want it a hundred percent guaranteed? Or could they take on a bit more risk for the opportunity to actually have a better standard of living in retirement? And what is that, what is that optimal risk-return trade-off? Now, we did calibrate a small model to look at that. And I know it's a model and so on, but it used the sort of consensus views. I mean, I should point out that all this work, or the work I'm presenting, sorry, is in discussion papers on the National Institute working, the National Institute site under their sort of working papers, policy, policy papers section. It's also available on our websites too. So we did a few calculations about this, and we basically thought, you know, on these, on the basis of these, of these calculations, a member that had a full, if you like, contribution history into the state pension, also had a career, worked in the career, contributions to the USS, would probably, or could well want to, you know, transfer out or, you know, take some sort of risk on their pension. And so what we're going to do is give them that option. So the idea is that we give members an option. Now, it's an option. They can let their optional apps, so it's completely voluntary, yes. It's an option to try and transfer out, and this is where the slight innovation is, some of their USDV pensions, their personal pension fund, not all. So it might be ten percent, it might be twenty percent of their USSDB pensions. Put it in, effectively remove it from the retirement builder into the investment builder. So remove it from the DB scheme into a DC scheme. This could be done at the actually fairly fair rate of the fund. So there is no sort of trade-off here, there is no sort of subsidy of the members that are left or whatever. It's done at the actually fair rate, which is roughly around about naught percent today. Now, this, we believe, could offer some members a better risk-return trade-off for their contributions. And to give an idea of what that risk-return trade-off is, we tried to sort of visualize it as a coin toss. So assume a member's got twenty years until retirement. They've, they now have, or because of their contributions, they now have a pension income of twenty thousand. And they decide to take an option out to transfer some ten percent of their pension fund. So they want to put ten percent of that, two thousand pounds into the DC fund. What is the risk-return trade-off they're getting there? Well, we did visualize that as a coin toss, a coin that has the same, a weighted coin toss that has the same expected return as the equity market and the same variance as the return market. That coin toss, if they're unlucky, and it, you know, they toss their tails, they're unlucky, then they stand to lose roughly around about eight hundred pounds. So instead of having a retirement income of twenty thousand pounds, they'll now retire on an income of nineteen thousand two hundred. But if they're lucky and throw a head, then they will make six thousand four hundred pounds on that heads and will retire instead with a retirement income of twenty-six thousand four hundred, rather than twenty thousand. So that's the sort of risk-return trade-off. And we're, you know, suggesting that perhaps members might be willing to do ten, twenty, thirty percent to get the best risk-return trade-off. It will reduce, if it's popular, it's a popular measure, and lots of people transfer out, that will reduce the size of the fund. It will make the covenant, it will automatically strengthen the covenant now because the universities remain, become relatively larger than the fund. It's also the only intergenerational way, fair way, or way of sharing that risk because these are accrued pension promises. And therefore, all the pension promises otherwise would have to fall on future, the future members of the USS scheme. This way, that risk is shared to the benefit, we think, of current members. And it will give the USS trustees and the JNC more flexibility to take on a little bit more risk and hopefully be a little bit more generous with the benefits going forward. Now, it's only, it's an idea, it needs to be fleshed out, there are lots of things to think about. There's advice that will be needed, but maybe that can be secured because it can be done collectively at a reasonable price. And the advice has to address this idea of what is the best transfer percentage. And that will depend on the member's risk tolerance, it will depend on their state pension contributions, it will depend on other liabilities they have, such as mortgages and so on. You have to think about the implicit insurance benefits within the USS, the capacity and life insurance benefits. And you have to think of taxing implications, particularly for the higher-paid workers who might be approaching their lifetime limit, pension limit. So those are things that have to be thought about. So in summary, to conclude very quickly, we think that the unions have a point that, in all likelihood, there's enough money in the pensions to meet those promises. However, the regulator is correct too, in the significant tail risk that we have to think about and try and minimize that tail risk, that the funds could be exhausted, leaving an enormous liability for the university, almost too big to bear. And we have to try and remove that risk, get that risk down of that pension, of the USS pension scheme, and we propose one possible way of doing that. Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, James. Kate, a view from the inside, over to you.
Thank you. David, I'm owing to the IT difficulties I'm having today, I'm not going to be able to share my slides. If you can share the slides I sent you, that would be great, if you can't, don't worry.
I might be able to, let me, let me see if I can do that, hold on.
Well, the early slides are very, the early slides are very dull, so I'm just going to start talking. I apologize, my IT in, well, it's not actually my incompetence, it's complicated, too complicated to explain, but I've had to use a very different, unexpected computer. Ah, thank you, great.
Can you see that?
I can, I can see it, it's, can you pull screen that?
Yes, is that better?
Lovely, great, thank you very much, that's perfect.
Tell me when to go on through slides.
Yeah, so go on to the next slide anyway, please, thank you. I wanted to say thanks a lot for asking me along to talk about these presentations. And of course, I'm talking mostly from the point of view of the trustee. And David said earlier, a lot of you will know a lot about USS and some, but some of you may not. So I hope those of you who do know a lot will forgive me. I'm going to talk a bit about the regulatory framework, a bit about investment return projections, and a bit about the ways forward. First thing I want to say is, as a trustee, we're not free to do as we like. Social media, I find, often imputes to us powers and abilities we don't have. We have to follow the considerable quantity of pension regulation, some of which is mentioned on this slide, and also the very bizarre and convoluted rules that the USS itself has. I should say that the views of the trustee board or individual trustees may not fully agree with pensions regulation and the views that we get from TPR. We may also, by the way, have different thoughts on benefit design from those which emerge from the Joint Negotiating Committee. But in neither case is the trustee the person who decides. Next slide, please. So with, the first of the three principles we've adopted is about meeting our primary duty. And that's to ensure that the benefits that have been promised to USS members or accrued by them can be paid. Active members accrue new benefits every day. If we underfund new promises, we can very quickly fall at odds with our primary duty. So some members paying into the scheme today, or their dependents, could be alive enjoying their benefits at eighty years' time. That's a heck of a long way for us to be looking forward. So we need, and this has already been stressed by James, a, to be very sure we have enough money to pay out on these promises, and a high degree of certainty that if there is a shortfall, we can rely on the employers. So how do we think about sustainability? Well, I think sustainability carries different meanings in this scheme. I interpret it as thinking about, can employers and members afford the present rates of contributions without undue strain? And doing our best, again, James has talked about this, to ensure a low risk of a funding problem in the scheme so large it would put the scheme's financial position in doubt. And I think those two considerations, affordability today and a low risk of failure tomorrow, can obviously come into conflict. We'll just talk quite a bit about, in criticism of our comments on self-sufficiency in the twenty twenty valuation and indeed in previous valuations. And he's quite right, mature pension schemes are obliged to have a long-term funding objective, generally some form of self-sufficiency, a very low-risk portfolio. It would be quite prohibitive to fund USS in that way today, and we don't seek to do so. We do, however, have some worry about how big the self-sufficiency deficit might be. And we have allowed for the prospect of whether the scheme could move to self-sufficiency over time. And actually, we've allowed a very long time in this valuation at thirty years. Clearly, what we are worried about is that the self-sufficiency deficit defined in this way does not become so large that it'd be infeasible to close this gap. Now, I agree that the circumstances in which this may happen may be remote, but the last fifteen years have left me sharply aware that remote risks happen. To some extent, I'm agreeing with Woon here, I think it is a remote risk. Where I think I probably differ from Woon when he looks forward is I cannot be completely certain over very long periods of what cash contributions I'm going to get in from the employers. I can't be certain about the investment returns either, by the way, but I think both are uncertain. And at the end of February twenty twenty-two, the self-sufficiency deficit was still twenty-seven point seven billion, down from March, but still pretty large relative to the size of the sector. So our primary covenant measure is the ability of employers to fund the scheme on an ongoing basis. And running the scheme on this basis means we have to think about the ability of all employers to fund the scheme. Our covenant assessment looks at a wide range of factors, all of employers affordability, balance sheet strength, cash generation, market position and outlook. And it is our view that it would be reckless to fund the scheme in a way that puts individual employees at risk of unsolvency, or alternatively, of having to pick up potentially substantial liabilities if we have insolvency of other employers. Cover the next slide, please. Thank you. If we projected the DB benefits of the scheme only on the basis of what was happening to risk-free rates, as I say, are, so the pensions regulator, it's clear that their framework focuses on the protection of benefits already earned. Other considerations maintaining strong future service benefits are secondary factors for them. Why is that? Well, in the past, they had to experience some poor employer behavior where people put the payment of pension promises at risk, sometimes more knowingly than others. Now, the university sector is different from others, we have no expectation of poor behavior, but it isn't really, it isn't completely free from risk. I put on this slide a couple of the quotes from the very many letters I've had from the regulator over the past eighteen months or so. And it's probably the case that the most substantive disagreements we had with the regulator was over the strength of the covenant, and that that's probably lay behind the regulator's view that our pricing of the new benefits package. And by the way, this is the pricing as in September, it's gone up a little bit since then. Some of you will know because of the increased inflation protection. But they decided that it wasn't so much away from their pricing that they were going to take further action. Since we all expect the sector to be around for a long time, why are TPR anxious and why did we spend so long on covenant protection? Well, I'm not going to try to speak for TPR, but one issue, and actually, when one referred to this, is that the regulator would have preferred the sector to have committed to contingent contributions in the event of the large deficit. And that was explored unsuccessfully in the twenty eighteen valuation. But my recollection was, it wasn't that, so it wasn't that USS rejected it, but that the universities themselves were not really able to, because of the mutual nature of the scheme, they weren't really able to come up with convincing contingent contributions. So we had two concerns. One was we wanted a moratorium on employers leaving the scheme to preserve the overall balance sheet strength. And the second was to ensure individual institutions didn't put their own ability to support the scheme at risk by acquiring significant debt. And that's, of course, because we don't want one scheme running into difficulties to mean that their liabilities have to be borne by other employers because of the mutual commitment. So I think our measures strengthened the covenant, but also importantly, protected the sector as a whole. Next slide, please. Moving on to talk about where we are on investments. Well, it must be apparent from the very different presentation so far, in setting a price for the valuation, the trustee has to form a view of several highly uncertain future factors. And then we have to make a different judgment about how much prudence we take against that view to limit the risk of a very bad outcome. I think that's clear from James's slides. And as anybody would know, this is an example of trying to take a view about factors which are frankly radically uncertain, despite all the good work that we all do on simulations. So I think both that the view we take is bound to be wrong and that we can't reduce the risk of a very bad outcome absolutely to zero. We know that the big picture of the past twenty-five years is guilt yields, real guilt yields falling and defined benefit asset values rising. Generally, our view is that the rise in asset values has led to an expectation of lower future returns, while the decline in real guilt yields has pushed up the value of our liabilities and increased the self-sufficiency deficit. Next slide, please. If we'd been projecting our assets on the basis of risk-free assets, If we'd been projecting our assets on the basis of risk-free assets, of course, these projections would have come more, become more and more pessimistic. And the rise in, the rise in asset, in asset prices partly reflects the risk premium above, above risk-free rates. And so if we look at today's relatively strong asset prices, we think, as I said, that they're consistent with lower expected return. Now, in the 2020 valuation, we did allow for more risk relative to risk-free rates than we had in 2018. Partly, we did that because March 2020, as many people have commentated, was a very particular time, it was when the pandemic had just come about. And we try very hard that our valuation methodology isn't driven too much by circumstances on a particular date. However, in contrast, we took a more prudent view in 2020 relative to our own best estimates of future returns. Whether those two aspects, a bit more risk relative to risk-free rates, a bit more prudence relative to our best estimates is right, is of course a difficult matter, but that was the judgment we took. Cover the next slide, please. The expectations of asset growth at any valuation will be contained within a cone of uncertainty. Sometimes people call this a funnel of doubt. This chart suggests that actually in recent valuations, asset price performance has generally remained within the range of uncertainty, the range of uncertainty that we acknowledge. Since the 2020 valuation, it's been close to the top of that range. What conclusions might I draw from these charts? Now, in judging the health of the scheme, we have to think about liabilities as well as assets. I find it very difficult to know how those two will move against each other, valuation to valuation. It may be that we've come to the end of the long-term fall in real gilt yields or that this, that this long-term fall may reverse. Equally, there's a risk that future shocks could push yields down again. And how any change in risk, risk-free yields will relate to the behaviour of risky or growth asset prices will depend on a variety of factors. David, you'll remember that at the Bank of England, we used to say that things depended on the source of the shock, and I think that's true here as well. So at each successive valuation, the trustee has to somehow form a view of what seems to be the appropriate pricing at the time. There are risks for us if we're too optimistic about the future, and actually, the experience of recent USS valuations has been one of successive disappointments. Equally, we don't want to be too pessimistic. And I honestly don't know in the very long run which side of the line we will have fallen in the 2020 valuation. Reasonable people can reasonably disagree, and indeed, the range of actuarial views on this valuation is very wide. Cover the final slide, please, David. I want to tread carefully here in talking about ways forward, because I started off by saying that benefit design was a question for the stakeholders. It's not really for the trustee, but the trustee is always anxious to support the stakeholders. And we are very sympathetic to the view that the current one-size-fits-all doesn't really work for either members or employers. We have an opt-out rate at around fifteen percent, which is quite high. And across our employers, there are very different views on affordability and risk. But there are two promising flexibilities which are being looked at at the moment. The stakeholders are working together on a lower-cost option. Now, this is not always easy. And there's a key question about, of the variety of reasons that people have for opting out, perhaps that they're not very long in the UK, or that they're simply under financial pressure, or they don't expect to stay in university employment for very long, which of these we want to address? I think we also don't want to set up a lower-cost option which undermines the main hybrid scheme. I know that both the union and the university employers hope to consult on their ideas on a lower-cost option in coming months. More ambitiously, we're presently exploring with the uni, with the university employers, moving to conditional indexation. This would mean that the indexation of pensions above the statutory minimum, both pre and post-retirement, would be made conditional on the funding position of the scheme. That would be a heck of a safety valve for the trustee, it would enable us to take more risk as the guarantees would be softer. And there are, of course, examples of these schemes in Canada and the Netherlands. But there's quite a lot to do before we can move ahead with this, both regulatory and legislative implications. Future decisions about indexation would also tend to be fraught as of valuations today. They would be trade-off across the generations in scheme design, and judgement calls would still need to be made. Importantly, before James or David remarks on this, although this would help with future accrual, it wouldn't solve the problem of a deficit arising from the benefits we've already accrued. And that, of course, is what the Sefton Miles idea aims to do. And if the, and I would be pleased to hear from the stakeholders whether they were interested in this idea being ta, being taken forward, I think it would be for the stakeholders to say that was the case. David, thank you very much, I apologise for my incompetence. Thank you very much indeed for kindly sharing your screen.
Okay, good. I think, I think I have stopped screen sharing at that point. Can I encourage people, it's difficult for us actually to know how many people are there listening to us in the, in the wider world. But if you do have questions, please use the facility on the screens, on your screens, to submit a question. I'll, I'll read out as many of those I can to our, to our three, our three speakers. Perhaps I could try and kick off by asking a question to see whether we can agree on what, why there seems to be a difference. On the one hand, Woon, I, I think you're arguing that the scheme is in, in very good health, it's, it's pretty fully funded. There is no need for contribution rates to rise or for the generosity of new pension, pensions accrued to be, to be reduced. While Kate, and I think James as well, have pointed out that while there's a high probability that things are okay, there's a worryingly significant probability that they're not. And maybe the scheme is underfunded, not by a few hundred million, but by several billions of, of pounds. And I wonder, Woon, if I could put this question to you. It seemed to me that the, the, your analysis did, did not ask the question, are the assets that are in place at the moment likely to be, very likely to be sufficient to pay for the accrued pension promises that have already been made? I think instead you looked at money coming in and money going out, money coming in in the future in the form of contributions from future members or a, active members and from universities. And on top of those contributions that are decided by the contribution rate, the possibility that universities also put in a large amount of money if that turns out to be a, 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 a problem. And the question, so first of all, I, I think that's why you're, we're reaching sort of different conclusions on how significant is, is the risk of a problem. So first of all, I'm going to ask you whether you agree that that, that is why one comes up with a different answer. And as a follow-up question, I'd be interested in people's views on the acceptability, in some sense, of relying on future contributions when one doesn't know how many university academics in the future will want to be in the scheme. And I'm not quite sure, Woon, what assumption you made about how many active members paying in from now into the far distant future there will be. Maybe we can come back for a separate question about how confident one can be essentially about the value of the covenant. How likely is it that universities will be able to put in ten, twenty, twenty-five billion pounds if needs be at some point in the next, not six or twelve months, but the next forty, fifty, sixty years? So maybe, maybe we'll come, come back, back to you for this first question about your way of assessing the viability of the scheme, the probability that something will go wrong, relative to a different approach, which I think James was following, which was, what are the assets that are there now to pay for pensions that have already been promised?
Thank you, David. I think I can start off by saying that it is a well-established research finding the benefits of intergenerational risk sharing. And the DB scheme has the best design to achieve this. As I, as I mentioned in the presentation, the risk of pensioner not receiving the pension payment is fully taken up by the younger active members. And, and the, 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 and the, 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 the regulations and institutions should be there to facilitate this. That's why we have banks, that's why we have, you know, central banks and all these insurance companies. That the path that has been happening with the pension industry is basically making pensions, oh, making the pension costs unnecessarily more expensive, in my view. With regarding to the long-term risk, I, I think it's important for us to realise that if you look at the, 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 the economic activities of human beings, there, there are many different sectors of industries and businesses. But the, the averaging out of each other is, is very, it is often being overlooked by people who sort of fixate on risk only, without really understanding how certain sector not doing well, the money will come and go into other sector. So what I'm trying to say is that you will be quite surprised to see the stability of the growth of the economic activities over centuries of time. And what the investment, long-term investment by pension schemes carry out is actually, although we call it financial markets, equities market, is really, in a long-term perspective, they are investing in human economic activities. And, and in that regard, the risk has been overly exaggerated. So if you take that into account, the risk is a lot smaller than we think. And, and another point, what I want to say is that the, the, being education, you know, higher educations in, in the UK, despite the relatively small size of the UK, but it, it, it sort of stand out in the world, the, the UK higher education sector. So the, 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 the standing of the HE sector is, is without doubt is, is, is come, you know, is, is rang really good. And, and so we should have confidence in that, even though there may be sort of financial hiccups with certain universities. Overall, the sector should be there, there will be always people, always want to go to good universities. And face it, you know, Oxford and Cambridge has been around for eight hundred years. It's, it's, it's difficult to see a future without university. After all, being human, we want to learn, we want to put in the best effort for our future generations to equip the cell with knowledge and things like that. So that's another aspect regarding the security of the so-called cash contributions from the employers. I think there's an element of also that the, we are, we are, we are coming down to this path of self-fulfilling prophecy that a lot of negativity is being put into this DB schemes in such a way that the universities, they are becoming sort of unnecessarily worried about it. Or, or, you know, to the, you know, but basically, and hence, having that sort of unjustified worry about the viability of such a pension scheme. And finally, I do show that because of prudence, this, the, the, a DB scheme is expected to grow, the surplus is expected to grow because of the prudence. Prudence implies there is a surplus. And by compounding of the surplus over time, this, the, the, the funding ratio of DB schemes is on a rising trajectory. And that higher funding ratio, you're further able, the scheme, I mean, the, 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 yeah, the scheme to absorb any further shock, like however remote it is. And one final point, even in the worst case or scenario, my research shows that if this really catastrophic disaster happened in terms of an open scheme to absorb that risk in terms of an ongoing open scheme, in terms of contribution rate, it is quite low. It's only about thirty-four percent of contribution, rather than something astronomical as is being put forward by the USS valuation, like sixty-seven percent, which is ridiculous, you know. So, so even this thirty point seven percent contribution rate, the, the risk of not able to pay pensions through is something only like, like point one percent over eight hundred is horizon. So, so the risk is really quite minimal.
I, I, I'll, I'll let James and Kate come, come back on some of these chats, sort of put, put one question, just to make sure I understand what you're, you're saying, Woon. I think you were saying that we should think of investment as being broader than just equities, bonds, property, things like that. We're investing in human, human activities. Did you mean by that that one can rely on the future contributions of future workers as opposed to just the fruits of investing in ex, e, e, existing assets invested in equities, bonds, properties, whatever? And a, a related issue, when you say in the worst case, the contribution rate wouldn't need to go up very much, can I just ask you, to be clear, so we all understand, what are you assuming about the number of people who will be continuing to contribute into the scheme? And do you factor in that if things do go not very well with the accumulated assets for some period, and therefore one needs to have a slightly higher contribution rate? That in itself risks making some people pull out, and you get into a downward spiral that the contribution rate needs to be higher and higher the more people pull out. But the higher the contribution rate goes, the more people do pull out. And so the thing becomes rather fragile. And just when you need to rely on it, and it may only be in a small proportion of instances, it's, the, the people are not there to put money in. In other words, because you can't force future generations to stay in the scheme and continue to contribute, are you at risk of underestimating how solid the scheme is?
Right. By, well, first of all, we look at all the big companies that's listed in the stock market. You know, they, they, they are actually representing, they are a good proxy for the world economy. You know, Apple, Amazon, you know, they are actually a good proxy for economic activity. So in that sense, what I'm saying is that if the investment is truly long-term, right, this is actually not investing in a highly volatile stock market, rather is actually investing in the future. Like, for example, we have this climate change, right? There will be change, there will be a, a new sectors coming up to do with renewable energy and, 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 you know, and all these things. And, and that, that, the, the money that go into that, and as long as the, the pension scheme is well diversified, the investment, then that will be captured by the investment. So in that sense, you know, the, the worry about the volatility of the investment is overdone. You know, and regarding the, sorry.
Yeah, let, 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 let's just stop at that point, and I'll, we'll, we'll come back to perhaps the question. I think a lot of people are interested in about future contributions, and is that fragile, might people pull out? But I, I want to get Kate and James an, an opportunity to, to respond to some of these issues.
If I may, I mean, David, you, I thought, put the issue quite well, and I did touch on it in my remarks. I mean, I too think that the university sector, I mean, I, it was a pains in my remarks to say that one of our big arguments during the valuation was about the strength of the covenant. And the trustee has judged that there is a strong covenant, because I believe the sector will stay there, and all the employers have agreed they will stay in the scheme, which is very important to the point you made about the potential for the scheme kind of collapsing under, under its own, under its own weight. That's one of the reasons why that is an important, an important part of the covenant for us. But because we're having to look forward over such long periods, if I think back, say, fifty years to the size and scale of the university sector, and what we might have thought it was today, actually, we'd probably have guessed it was rather smaller than it's turned out to be, because it's expanded tremendously. Looking forward fifty years, I'm sure that the sector, and particularly the universities in it, which are really important to our covenant, will still be there. But whether they will still be the same size and have exactly the same number of academics paying in, to me, is much less certain. We have at the moment a strong position in international student market. We have at the moment a strong position in international student markets, but I don't, I cannot be a hundred percent sure, I can't bank a hundred percent of my bets on that, on that continuing. So I have to, to think about the risk that future contributions will not be as large as, as, as Wing suggests. I can't be sure, they may be larger, they may be smaller, but if I'm prudent, I have to aim off a little bit. I think the question of economic growth is clearly a very, is clearly a very difficult, um, clearly a very difficult one, and probably not one we're going to have much of a sensible debate about just in this, in this, um, in this session. But Wuun mentioned climate change, and I absolutely agree that the transition and the work that needs to be done on climate change will produce new sectors. But there is quite a debate about whether it will actually, certainly during the transition period, prove to be a drag on growth. Again, I don't completely know the answer to that question. I'm not going, I, I very rarely pretend I have a crystal ball, but these are not easy questions to answer. And I come back to the point I tried to make, I think it's very dangerous for a pension scheme to kind of assume everything will go on as it is and it will all turn out okay.
James, do you want to come in?
Just very, very quickly, really, just to, to reiterate what you were saying. Certainly, the way I saw when one, sorry, uh, analysis was very much almost treating the USS as a pay-as-you-go pension. So when you start to think of it as the contributions are paying the outlays, then you're thinking of the world of Martin Felstyn. And what's key is the growth rate. So effectively, the growth rate on the pay, sorry, the return on a, a pay-as-you-go pension is the growth rate. And so suddenly things look better because you're moving away from what is the real interest rate, which is negative, and slowly by looking at the pay-as-you-go pension, you're starting looking at the internal rate of return, if you like, of the contributions, is the growth rate. And so you get much better looking, um, sort of financials coming out of that scheme. But I, and, and then obviously, once you see it as a pay-as-you-go scheme, then you can see it follows on to every point you've made about how sustainable is that scheme? Is it going to grow? What rates is it going to grow and everything? And suddenly you see the whole thing in that context. So I found that as a useful way of thinking about that. It's trying to move the USS to almost a pay-as-you-go scheme. And then the other point I want to make was the intergenerational risk sharing. I always think that that's slightly overblown in that, and again, when one, sorry, when one brought that out by, um, talking about if the, if the assets were misvalued, undervalued at points in time, i.e. the inter-generational risk sharing is coming from the fact that you don't believe returns are a random walk. And as soon as you introduce some sort of mean reversion in returns, then yes, there possibly is a role for intergenerational risk sharing, because when the returns are bad, you're not going to get a revert and therefore you can, you know, take a little bit from one generation to, to, to pad it out. But if returns are, are random walks, the, 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 if you like, the possibility of intergenerational risk sharing is very minimal. And if anything, you know, over reliance on it can, can lead to this downward spiral, Dave was talking about it. So I think there were two ideas here that are, you know, worth thinking about, but maybe slightly gen- dangerous and you're almost converting the USS to a pay-as-you-go and over-exaggerating the, the power of intergenerational risk sharing, when returns are pretty close to random walks.
Can I quickly come back? Very quickly, two points. First one, first one is, this, what I have done is not pay as, as, as you go scheme. In fact, you know, the simulation, basically, the, the scheme is fully funded, in fact, it's massively overfunded, right? In the long term, right? And secondly, the intergenerational risk sharing, my simulation is basically assuming IID, right? So the contributions is not being used as pay-as-you-go, rather it is being used to mitigate risk in a short, well, you know, for one generation, for ten years, for example, right? As time goes on, the surplus implied by the prudence will itself enable the scheme's funding ratio to rise. And, and that, that rising funding ratio, ratio is what gives the, the, the added sort of security to the scheme.
And sorry, I've been there, misunderstood, because you talked in, in your presentation about cheap assets.
Well, yes, for example.
Because I don't understand where cheap assets come from.
Right, right, in that case, so I do apologize. I, that, that is because the presentation I've done is to many people who are not within the, uh, 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 sort of economics, financial area, right? For, for some people, you know, after the crash, they assume that it's a cheap asset, you know? And, and basically, you know, the, the, the risk for a closed scheme, which is the main difference between my analysis and your analysis, is that if, if, if the scheme is closed during a stock market crash, you know, because you need to sell assets, you know, i- i- in the crashed stock market to pay for the outgo, that is the biggest risk to the scheme. Whereas for an open scheme, such a risk is not there.
I want to, there's, there's, there's a few questions come in from delegates, and I'm going to put one on in just one moment. But let me just raise one issue, and again, it's, it's something that, that you said, Wuun, which was interesting, I thought, where you said that perhaps, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it sounded as if you were saying that what you might call conventional ways of thinking about the risk of the assets that a DB scheme, an open DB scheme like the USS has, those conventional ways may be significantly overestimating risk. James, in the empirical work that you reported, stuff that we worked on together, I think we'd, we'd assumed that the volatility of the return on what we call risky assets, essentially equities, the standard deviation over one, one year was of the order of seventeen and a half percent. I think that's a kind of central estimate based on some numerous empirical studies. Now, one could argue about mean reversion and such, but I think, Wuun, you just said that actually, even if you assume IID, i.e. there's no mean reversion. Even if you assume that in your calculations, I, I think implicitly you would say that using a seventeen and a half percent standard deviation dramatically overstates risk. Would I be right? And then a question for James, I mean, how, how do we justify using that number, given what, what Wuun, Wuun's view, which I think is that it's much too high? But am I right, Wuun, that you think that number is, is, is far too high?
Well, first of all, my simulation that I, 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 in my analysis is assuming IID. The, the important thing is that in the long term, in, in, in the long horizon, like twenty years, forty years, the return volatility is a lot smaller than is assumed by IID. That, that is because there is.
Can you just explain why? So you're about to do so through.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the important thing is that, that there is evidence that the lot, well, if you look at the, it's to do with what we call core integration between asset price and the economic fundamentals, right? The, the economic fundamentals volatility is a lot smaller than the asset price volatility. So when you have two core integrated series, then the, the long horizon asset price volatility will be actually driven by the fundamentals, which is like, for example, if you look at the dividend series, or the economic GDP growth rate. In fact, in fact, there is an evidence that it, that, that, that is, that, that the long horizon volatility is more likely to be closer to trend stationary, rather than uni- you, you, rather than unitary. So all this is technical terms here, but, but that is what I'm trying to say, that we have been over stating the long horizon volatility.
Right, but I think it comes back to the question about how much you can rely on future contributions, because you may, you may be right, that the volatility of assets is not terribly well correlated with and is much more volatile than the return on what you might call the overall economy, GDP, much of which is created, of course, by labour, rather than value added from capital. But that's not an asset that you can invest in. The government doesn't really issue GDP-linked bonds, they do what they do. And are you saying that because your calculations rely so much on future contributions from future workers, that you are somehow tapping into this wider asset and not just investable assets like equities, bonds, property that you can buy today? All of which, of course, leads us back to the question, how comfortable are you in relying on generations of future university employees putting money in, particularly if things go rather poorly with the investable assets, and they're asked to contribute even more to pay for past pension rights that are accrued by people who have long retired?
We cannot invest in GDP, but we can invest in proxy for GDP, like equities, other productive assets.
But then, but then your argument, I think, falls apart, because then you're saying, you said a moment ago, well, equities are much more volatile, they, they're not like GDP. And now you're saying, well, they are like GDP, because you can invest in it.
The, 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 the long horizons, the long horizon volatility of these assets will be similar to that of the GDP, that's what I'm trying to say, yeah? And, and, and regarding contributions, I'm not relying on the, basically, what I'm trying to say is that, that the long-term viability of the scheme, relying on, in, on the scheme, investing in growth or productive assets, that's a long-term viability. For the short term and those adverse situations, right? The cash contribution, it may not be, it can be smaller, right? But if it's there, right, it will help significantly with mitigating the risk, right? I, I accept that the possibility that the higher education sector could be smaller, but that decline in the higher education sector can be, is something may, is very well be, can be cooked by what we understand now about the future education.
Okay, I, I want to ask a question that somebody's raised in the audience. And I'm gonna, it's a question for James, and I'm gonna ask James to answer, and then I'm gonna get Kate to come up with a final comment. We've, we've got about seven, seven minutes to go. So let me just, uh, explain to people what the question is that has come in for James in particular. It's a question, James, about some of the calculations that have been done on what proportion of DB benefits that people might have accumulated in the USS, they might be willing to trade for a claim on a DC fund, which got you, in a sense, the equity risk premium. And the question is the following one. You mentioned that how much people would want to switch out of DB into the, a, a DC fund, take some money out of the DB and just put the money into a DC fund, depends to some extent on the value of their pension. And the question is this, that in the calculations that, that we've reported in, in other places, James, we, we've tended to show that people who have a smaller pension from the USS promised might switch a larger proportion. And the quest, the question was, why, why, why does that happen? What, what is the logic of that argument? And how confident one might feel in that? Incidentally, the, the question quotes some of those fractions that come up in the calculations that you're familiar with of, you know, thirty-five percent, forty-odd percent, as, as high as fifty or sixty percent as being the proportion might people want to switch out, and that those proportions may be somewhat higher for people who have accumulated a relatively small pension, DB pension in the USS. Do you want to comment on that?
Firstly, say that, th- those calculations were just to give a guideline. So I, they're not written in stone or anything, but they were to show that under a reasonable set of assumptions, the amount of people who want to transfer out might be a reasonable sum. It's not going to be close to nought to five, it probably might be ten, fifteen, twenty. But I, I'm not putting any money on the actual number, because that will depend a lot more things. It's, what is easy to answer is why it tends to be a higher for people on lower pay. And the reason for that is because the state pension is guaranteed, and the state pension becomes a bigger proportion of their income, which is guaranteed, and therefore they're willing to take proportionally a higher percentage of risk on their defined benefit scheme in order to get that uplift. Now, that's what, that's what comes out of these very simple models, and that's where, that, that's, that explains the answer. Do I think that that should be taken too seriously? Well, I think, I mean, I think you have to, you know, you have to think about, you know, the, the relative size of your pension, your state pension relative to your, um, your defined benefit. And I think if, if the end, if the defined benefit is just that little bit extra on the top, then possibly you would be willing to take a, a bigger proportion of risk on that. I think there's probably some insight there, but the figures, I wouldn't put too much money on the actual figure.
Okay, fair enough. Um, Kate, we've got a few minutes left. Um, I'm gonna let you close up with a few ob- observations.
Thank you. I mean, I think the first thing I should say is I obviously find both the contributions very interesting, and I have some sympathy with the view that I think Wuun was arguing for, although I'm not quite sure, which is that one of the things that open DB schemes think about, should think about in particular is the importance of how they, they invest to support the, to support and facilitate economic growth. You know, if we all move to boring, risk-free assets, then we're not doing much for the enterprising side of the economy. I, I have some, I have some sympathy with that. And I think he's obviously right. I mean, I share, I also chair a large closed scheme where our worries about cash flow and the value of assets is acute, because we have no money coming in. And I pay out seven percent of the assets, and I, you know, and I, I think about that scheme completely differently, just to comfort you in the way in which I think about USS, where we are nowhere near funding in that way. I, I, I think the nature of the overall problem is absolutely clear, that we have made in, for a variety of good regulatory reasons, we have made DB promises very absolute, regardless of the future of economic growth, which we've had some discussion about, regardless of what happens to inflation, and to some extent, regardless of the health of the sector or industry from, from which they come. And I, you know, it's, it's boring about this, but you know, thirty or forty years ago, we looked at the titans of UK industry and thought they'd be there forever. And now most of them have gone, or they're very much smaller. I don't expect that to happen to the university sector. But I, you know, I find it, I, I don't know what the, what the future of the university sector will be over a very, over a very long period. I'm interested in the fact you went to eight hundred years, Wuun, that is a very long, that is a very long period indeed. So I think these thoughts about how we could change risk sharing a little bit so that the risk sharing falls a little bit towards those who have accrued benefits is a very interesting one, and I am interested in, in, in James and, and David's suggestion. I would be interested in the stakeholders' responses to it. However, at the moment, as, as I said and I talked about the ways forward, we are looking at things which I hope would make the scheme more attractive to people who are at, at the start of their careers, if there was some low-cost option. And if we think about conditional indexation, which will enable a bit of risk sharing, and I think if well-designed, could help a little bit with the intergenerational problems, that will certainly help to prevent the scheme in future getting, as it were, deeper and deeper into the kind of very difficult state that we have been in over the last few years. I think I might sum it up by saying I wouldn't wish personally to go through another valuation in quite the same way we've gone through this one. And I would hope that if we're able to think about conditional indexation, that we wouldn't be, that we wouldn't have to do that. I would like to think that the scheme is going to move to a better place than the place it is in today. And that's why I've agreed to chair it, and that's my objective.
Thank you very much, Kate, on that optimistic note. I've had dire warnings about what happens if we overrun, and we are at five forty-five, that's when we should stop. So we should stop. Thank you very much, Wuun, thank you very much, James, thank you very much, Kate. And let's call it a day there before we get unceremoniously chopped off. Thank you all very much, and thank you very much, the audience out there, for your questions.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Kate, especially.
Thank you, yes.